Okay, so to recap, we decided area one north of Geneva, east of Caltrain, as industrial park?
Yes, I wanted to point out that we talked industrial park and the commission's discussion of light industrial before and what would be a combination of ecology and light industrial would be essentially smaller businesses in multi-tenant structures as opposed to large-scale freight forwarding or logistics. Because one of the things that you had talked about when you said light industrial would be appropriate were those kinds of multi-tenant uses as opposed to the bigger manufacturing. So we'd be talking about something that would be a little bit more, there would be actually a lot more employment-intensive, even though it's industrial in nature, than warehousing, freight forwarding, logistics would be. And that's important also because the area that we're dealing in between ecology and Geneva is within a half-mile of that, of the Bay Shore Station. So the light industrial we're talking about is multi-tenant, generally small businesses, industrial, manufacturing, assembly in nature as opposed to highly truck-intensive.
Okay.
Ecology is ecology.
Maybe they'll come up with their smaller trucks also someday.
Well, presently, there's a lumberyard next door. That would be considered to be what?
Yeah, the lumberyard is actually in Area 2, and...
It's already there.
Yeah. The lumberyard is a, somewhere between retail and industrial use because there's a lot of outdoor storage. And it can be made to fit in either category. You know, that's where we can deal with business park, and that's where we start combining categories. Because there are uses out there that are neither retail nor office nor manufacturing. You can't characterize it with a single use. That's one of the reasons for using a more general category sometimes. So if you're ready to go to Area 2, this is on the south side of Geneva, east of Caltrain. The northern portion of this site is within a half-mile of the Caltrain, or Bay Shore Caltrain Station. And you see the various uses that have been proposed in the various plans. The DSP scenario is looking at a mixture of office and retail. And even in the CPP scenario is looking at commercial office, office, retail, civic uses, which you really don't need to designate specific areas for. But in the CPP scenario, it also looks at maintaining the southerly half of that area, the southerly portion of that area in open space. This is really one of the most visible portions of the site from the freeway, from your community, and I think you can work from there.
What's underneath? Is that where the dump is?
Yeah, that's the main part of this.
That was the main dump?
That's the, stop, this is where renewable energy could go.
So my initial thoughts about Area 2 is that at 90 acres, if the high-speed rail came through, it would take up most of that area. So it probably would not be a good idea to start blanket approving, you know, large new uses for that area until such a time as we have a better confidence about what's going on with HSR.
Again, I think we've had this conversation about sort of the nature of high-speed rail. There's no plan. They have no environmental review. We wouldn't really recommend that the city delay its planning process on an endeavor which is not fixed or planned. And if that weren't to happen, the idea that this is just left in limbo until such time as high-speed rail makes the decision, we don't really believe is good planning, so, you know, you can take that.
But the problem is this particular area also, if you look at the developer's plan, you're still talking about 20-plus years before this area is developed. So we have to look at the timeline of Caltrain versus this and figure out who will come first. So if you look at the developer's thing, that's also 20 years down the line.
I would propose then that if, whatever the city plans, if high-speed rail has the means, the opportunity to take this property, acquire it by whatever means, and use it for their purpose, that's, if that's in their legal prerogative and they choose to do that, that's their call. Whether or not the city should just not leave this property unplanned for that, that's generally not what you want to have, is a area in your general plan or city zoning that is really unplanned.
Well, we have existing uses there. And in particular, the soils processing takes up at least a fair chunk of that. And I know there was some talk about continuing the soils processing so that there would be available material to move on to the western portion. And I did have some follow-up clarification questions there because there was some talk that material might be brought in from off-site. There was also talk that some material from the soil processing might go to sites in the area of Candlestick. And I think that we need some more clarity on the desired ramp-down and duration of that business because, you know, if soil processing is going to be going on until the west end is completed, then that might be longer than HSR anyway. And if we're, you know, if we're talking about five or 10 years, I think it might be reasonable to leave that area, I wouldn't say unplanned, but there are current businesses that would continue operating.
And also the renewable energy option, you could do that without much problem there.
Yeah, yeah, we could.
And even the renewable energy option can work with the Caltrain facility, too. They can, they agreed to, they will be willing to put the renewable energy farm at that location also.
Yeah, yeah, once the soils processing is out of the way, that might be a potential use.
So one of the use could be that we can use that as existing businesses, soil processing and renewable energy, plus the Caltrain Maintenance Yard.
If I could, there were questions that Commissioner Anderson had regarding soil movement and how the soils processing fits. The EIR, in my understanding of soils processing, is it is there now as an interim use. And the intent of the landowner is that the soils processing would remain as an interim use until development actually started. The concept that you heard when Kaiser Marston spoke of dirt movement kind of works this way. The original concept of the dirt movement was you have the landfill that sits high, and the idea was dirt would have been moved, essentially a grading operation, moving soils from the landfill to the rail yard, basically to level them and create a level site across. The problem with that, as expressed by the applicant, is the cost of moving that dirt is so great, it became a burden on feasibility. So what Tim was explaining, and it's an interesting business concept, is the landowner can actually sell the dirt on the landfill to bring it down to the grade that they want, and whatever they, you know, millions of dollars' worth of dirt gets sold. And then they can buy dirt at about the same thing they sold it for and import dirt. So they are not paying to move it. The selling on one side and buying on the other creates a balance that they want, and it's basically, there may be a profit to doing it depending on timing of sale. So that idea of moving the dirt and the buying and selling should not be part of your land use decision. The recommendation, that what we're looking at as part of general plan is, as a community, what do you see as the most appropriate use of that area? Because that movement of dirt, I think, is not really part of the, doesn't really enter into the ultimate land use. The soils processing is an interim use. And just, in relation to high-speed rail, you have a couple of different options in terms of land use with whatever decision the authority might make. One is, as was just suggested, going with some low-intensity use and waiting out the authority to make a decision because that will be down the line. And depending on what they decide, then you can come back and change things. The other one would be to look at what would be the most appropriate use regardless of what the authority does. And then the authority, high-speed rail authority, if they decide at the end of their process that that is an area that they want, that some portion or all, I mean, they don't even know how many acres they want at this point, depending on how the electrification and what their needs are in terms of rolling stock, then they would buy it and acquire it. And at the point they made their decision, you would have all the opportunity you want to rethink whatever decision you made in the absence of just what they do then. So my recommend, as I look at this as a planner, I would, you know, this is just personally me, it's yours to make the recommendation, I would look at, what is the most appropriate use? What would we really like to see there? And then if the authority decides to buy it, you can leverage the authority to deal with, okay, we had talked about these land uses, you've now made, created these issues for us, and make the authority make up for whatever it is you would be losing in terms of community benefits and get some community benefit out of that. And I think several members of the commission, we talked about the potential rail yard, had said, you know, what's in it for us and what, you know, we need to leverage the authority to get benefits. So I would start with, this is what we'd really like to see, and that also gives you leverage in dealing with the authority at such a point if they do make that decision.
Well, I'm of the opinion that we should leave it open as a renewable energy generation with the option that the high-speed maintenance yard can be put at that particular...
Or something.
Or something.
Something that if we do it as a renewable energy generation, we can also allow something that could coordinate with the renewable energy.
That particular something is unknown.
This does bring up the point that we need more clarification on the financial aspects of the renewable energy plan, that was...
Why, we didn't have?
Yes, it was said to be financially feasible, but we don't really have numbers on, you know, how much less would remediation be if we did not remediate the landfill and, you know, what would the actual economic value of that be? But it just seems on the surface that, you know, having less need for remediation there seems more economically viable and safer for the community, and also that's a very good use for it, so.
And also the high-speed train, if a high-speed maintenance yard, that the state will take over all the expenses, so that's also going to help.
We're assuming they're going to come in.
Well, they have to, I mean, if they come in.
Yeah.
I think we should look at more of what we want first as opposed to what we're going to be possibly constrained by.
Well, I'd like to see...
That's fine, I'd like to see renewable energy.
I think we, and it's sitting in a, kind of a lumpy dump. I mean, we don't, I mean, this is not a planned dump, this is, who knows what?
Unplanned.
Yeah, unplanned. So renewable energy slash something that could work with renewable energy.
Like open space. Yeah?
I think that's something that we could consider. I don't know if open space and the renewable energy plant would be compatible or not, but you know, if you had high solar panels, maybe it would, I don't know. I had another question about the map. There is the green area near 101 that you labeled, I'm not looking at the right page right now, but it's called a setback or something.
The shoreline setback?
Shoreline setback. Yeah. And what was the proposal for that? Was it a proposed open space area?
Yeah, that area is, you heard from the windsurfing people, the idea of a shoreline park. A shoreline setback also shows up in, on the northern portion in that, in Area 2, that if you were looking at business park, commercial office, or some type of development, the idea would be, do you also want to maintain a shoreline park through there? The other thing I should point out is, in terms of landfill closure and renewable energy, landfill closure, any change in use on top of the landfill will require closure of the landfill.
Yes, that's clear.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought they were going to close it fairly soon anyway. Wasn't the closing of the dump ending? I mean, they've never really closed it, right?
The landfill ceased operations many years ago. They haven't formally closed it pursuant to state regulation. That'll be something that happens in conjunction with whatever development ultimately gets built out here. That's when the formal closure will occur in conjunction with development, not, we don't anticipate it happening before development actually proceeds.
Interesting.
So, what do we think?
I think I made my position regarding renewable energy. I'd like to see that, and also possible rail yard.
Or something similar.
Or something similar.
And, right, you're thinking renewable energy?
Yes.
And only renewable energy?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
And existing uses, like...
And existing uses, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I was looking at, it could be a creative way of combining, you know, business with renewable energy, but I think with the idea that renewable energy is kind of leading the charge, we've seen a lot of advances in business, businesses incorporating renewable energy, and even adding requirements for open space as part of that development. So there could be a creative combination of the two, but I still like to see the renewable energy in that specific area kind of lead, lead the way.
So I think everybody's in agreement for renewable energy. Can we add more to it? So that it's broader rather than narrower?
Well, I mean, one of the big differences between the CPP and the renewable energy is density, and especially density of energy use.
Right.
So just opening it all up for business, I don't think is necessarily beneficial in a broad sense. I would prefer to just start with that area as renewable energy and put the businesses in other areas.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Does that include thinking about the potential, I mean, the specifics of it? Meaning later on, there's 110 acres there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's quite a big, that's the biggest acre area that we have to deal with. So do we want, I guess my question is, do we want 110 acres reserved specifically for renewable energy?
Yes.
And existing uses.
And existing uses.
Yeah.
And potential rail yard.
So we want to add the rail yard? Is there any objection to that?
I don't...
I think the point was made is that we don't have to add rail yard explicitly because if that comes around, it'll come around.
We don't know yet.
But my point about the rail yard was that we shouldn't start building large buildings there that would have to be bulldozed if the rail yard did come around.
But are we thinking about that as if it's already happening, when it may not?
Right.
To determine what we could do with that area.
Well, I don't think it's a bad use to reserve it for renewable energy if it doesn't come around.
I agree with the renewable energy part, but just want to state again that I think there could be a creative way to combine light industrial with renewable energy in order to make it more feasible. I didn't get a sense that, again, it goes back to the question, what's missing on the feasibility from the renewable energy side plan.
I agree with you in concept, but it's all a question of density. I think maybe we could circle back if we needed to add density, then put that in the renewable energy area.
So then to be more inclusive, we can say renewable energy, light industrial with, so that when we come back, it's better to whittle down than to have to build back out, yeah?
Is it? No?
I think so. Because, I mean, if you're talking about the density, then that's a specific question that we can deal with in 110 acres, whereas if we were to do it now, we're just saying only, we're only going to leave it for renewable energy generation. So I'm kind of looking...
How about saying it this way? If we could combine it with some way for the renewable energy, some industrial to be able to pay for the 110 acres of renewable...
Right, basically to partner it up. I mean, that's what I'm...
That's what I'm hearing people say.
Yeah, that's, I think that's pretty much the core of what I'm saying. Also, when I was saying open space, I was envisioning the same thing with a business, businesses with required open space as part of their, of their plan. Because if you think of it that way, then it leaves that area open for more development than restriction. I prefer the broader versus the narrow because it's harder to change it and create, create that, enlarge it, as opposed to narrowing it, create exceptions easier.
Well, I want it to first and foremost be renewable energy.
To add approved uses, why is that?
No, no, I'm saying that to create an, to have the area that we have now, my thinking is that if you allow for these uses to take place, then when you need to change, if there are necessary reasons for changing, then you can come back and say, oh, well, let's just remove that. Because this is not, this conversation is, for me, very high-level. And then when we get down to the specifics, we come back and we say, okay, given the fiscal impact or given the density, which is not this conversation, the density is next conversation. We can come back and say, well, Area 2, we decided, and we talked about that, let's mark that for further discussion in terms of density.
So you're talking about removing it later, prior to the recommendation to the city council? Is that what you mean?
When we have the density discussion.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm hearing.
Because I want to hear the density discussion first, to think it through and plug it in, and then say, okay, well, if we're really going to want renewable energy generation to work and maximize that, then we need all 110 acres and existing uses.
Yeah, if you're only talking semantics, then I agree with you that light industrial might be a potential use in that area. But if you're talking about what I think right now our recommendation should be, I would say just renewable energy.
I actually think it's more than semantics, but we can have different opinions about that, yeah. So my position is more than renewable energy generation. I think a potential business.
A potential renewable energy business?
Yes. Potent, basically businesses that support the...
Renewable energy.
Renewable energy.
Renewable energy or business that...
Green businesses.
A green...
I was being more general with, again, because it is high, I was thinking the same thing as far as high-level, but light industrial with renewable energy driving whatever development is as kind of the default. So if it's not working out, renewable energy completely. But I wanted to have that discussion with the density and the feasibility.
Yes, yeah.
As potential of combining the two.
Right. That's my position as well.
But again, energy is the driving, the driver.
Okay, so how would we say that? Energy, renewable energy...
Lloyd's good with words. What do you think, Lloyd?
Okay. Couple things. I would, I would call that, it sounds like you would like the primary use to be renewable energy generation.
Right.
And we then will come back at your next meeting when we're talking about development intensity. And we can also look at how light industrial uses might fit in and how it might shake out in terms of uses. Because we'll also, as part of that, look at uses in and around the interchange along the Geneva frontage. So we'll look at some form of development, whether that fits, doesn't fit with where you want to go as part of your discussion of development intensity.
Another thing I think might be worthwhile is to zone the area around the Geneva extension, just a narrow strip separately, because there might be some desire to put something right along the roadside that's not just light industrial or...
Right.
And I'm not sure at this point exactly what that would be.
Or windmills?
No, not windmills.
So then what we can do is, when we come back to look at development intensity, we'll look at various options for development along the Geneva frontage, as well as some form of development at the interchange. With the primary use off Geneva being the renewable energy generation, is that...
Yeah, I like that.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess we're on to Area 3? Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Hey, Area 3 is the southerly portion of the landfill. The developer-sponsored plan here is showing, if you see where the 3 is, that open space, that was the large open space area through the middle of that potential development area with business park on both sides. The other scenarios show, show open space.
So I have a question. Open space would not include big, something like an entertainment center such as a golf, a small golf course?
No, it could. It actually could, right? Because I think it actually could, right?
But we'll put it this way.
Open space and potentially putting in a...
I would say it this way. It could if that is what you, where you want to take your recommendation. So if you say we want to look at open space for that area, there'd be more publicly available open space, but we also want the potential of that area being a more commercial use like a golf facility, you could...
I would suggest if you want to look at that kind of usage, that you should probably specify active recreation. Because, again, I don't want to be in a position where we're somehow, it's, open space is now interpreted citywide as a golf course. I don't want to be going there.
Yeah, I understand that.
So we want to, it's going to be commercial recreation slash open space, or if you want to do both or either, that's fine, but I would keep those uses separate.
We'll have a large number of golf courses here in the city of Pittsburgh.
Because the definition of open space I was using was on G.1.2, where it says that lands for the provision of active and passive recreation, so that would be included in there.
You can make it as open space slash active.
No, no, yeah. Well, because, yeah, it's included in the definition.
So it's already there in the open space, so we don't have to do anything.
Well, I think that's, I think that's non-commercial active use.
Yeah, but John's point is that that is still, that is still non-commercial.
Yeah.
Non-commercial recreation, as defined here.
Right.
Right, because if you're looking for this area, it's some more commercial-type recreation use, I would not change the general definition of open space so that same commercial recreation ends up as part of your definition, for example, on Ice House Hill.
Right.
So we want to just make sure you make that distinction.
Yes. So are we okay with the open space?
Well, I have a question. Where would we be putting the lumberyard? I mean, that's, how many acres did they want? Does anybody remember?
Golden State Lumber, is that what we're talking about?
Well, we're supposed to theoretically be moving it somewhere.
That would be within area, it was being proposed within what we're calling SubArea 2, so I guess the question is whether that would fit within that ancillary areas you were looking at.
Lumberyard with solar panels.
Oh, right next to, oh, so you're still on Area 2, okay.
Well, I guess that would be the description.
Yeah.
It can go along this strip that Commissioner Anderson was talking about.
The windmills?
New Geneva, close to the Geneva. Or it can go into Number 1.
I think if it gets relocated, there are other areas that it would fall into that.
It would, yeah, it would fit.
How many acres is it?
I don't know. Oh, for Area Three?
No, for the lumber. How many acres did the lumber?
Oh, I don't know how many acres the lumberyard, but Area Three is 80 acres.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
You're all staring at us. The acreage, is it, the lumberyard is all you're asking about?
She wants to know the acre.
Approximately two acres.
Two acres.
Two acres?
Could probably.
Oh, I'm sure we can shove it into the sink.
It'll probably stay.
It, it probably should be somewhere by.
You can put it underpass, Geneva Underpass.
I think the Geneva Underpass is slightly smaller than.
I, I, it needs to be near a road. You know what, I mean.
Right there.
The lumberyard, I mean, its location requirements are near a roadway, obviously.
Obviously.
As well as rail access.
Yeah.
So very close to Geneva Intersection.
Yeah. And, and as you talked about Area Two, one of the comments that you had was fit in, you know, how would we fit in a light industrial use? So in, in that case, you could look at the lumberyard and its uses being a light industrial use that you would look to fit.
No, it's just for the solar panel and.
Yeah.
Yeah, part of it.
That's what I was thinking. It's already there.
Or you can always put it in Area Four, right? That's industrial.
I would, I would say maybe a, a more sensical place to consider would be the southerly portion of Area Five, if the rail spur to the roundhouse is going in.
We're going to put the lumberyard in the rail house?
No, on the route to.
Or even Four, right?
But as I said, I mean, I don't see any reason why I can't see where it is.
Yeah, I mean. So for Area Three, are we in agreement that it's okay for open space?
Yeah.
As defined?
As defined.
As currently defined.
And then, did you also want to make provision for the potential for commercial, more commercial type recreation use in that area?
Yes.
Okay.
I think. Are we okay with that?
Or either and.
Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Rehart?
Yes, I, I think that appropriately, appropriate density of commercial uses in that area is fine.
So we can say open space slash made open.
Appropriate.
Yeah, well.
He's talking about density.
I'll come back with, with the right wording. But the way I understand where, where you are is to look at open space along with active recreational uses that may be more commercial in nature.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Area Four. Area Four is the Industrial Way park, you know, industrial park. And you, we've, we've talked about finding some way of keeping those uses on, on site and making, not necessarily those buildings, but, but the uses. And the issue for this area, when you look at the DSP, this is Business Park, maintaining that kind of industrial mixed with, with office use. The issue, the access issue for Area Four and Industrial Way is right now Industrial Way is in its very long cul-de-sac. And in the DSP scenario, just for safety purposes, there is a roadway crossing of that daylighted creek, which really is, is necessary for just safety purposes. So if you were looking, and that makes actually a good area for a, a long multi-tenant, much better design than is there now, but a modern multi-tenant for those businesses, because it's already there with those businesses, those types of businesses. So we'd be looking at really improving the design, improving the character, but the same kinds of small businesses that, that you have there now. The, that is what the, the Business Park Light Industrial would be. The other ones all show, the other scenarios show that as, as open space, which would essentially propose removal of the businesses along Industrial Way and conversion back to it.
We have no idea what the land is underneath those businesses.
Well, tho- those businesses on Industrial Way, as the EIR shows, are part of, I can never get my OU one and two right, but they're part of one of the operating units, too, and, and would undergo remediation as part of, of the remediation of OU two.
So is, is there a necessity to raise all of the existing buildings in order to do remediation?
You mean in that they're sort of half-falling over as we?
Yeah, like, do we have to take them all out? And, you know, is there anything under the no-build scenario that, that precludes improving them as they are? I mean, can't, I know it's been previously mentioned that at least the, the daylighted creek is going to cut through the beginning, so some modification is necessary. But I just wanted to discuss, you know, what, what has to happen.
I think the city can, can father out, right?
Well, I think a couple things. One is, you could, you know, if you wanted to keep the general land use pattern and you could keep the current, I mean, that, that area is, has its own discrete zoning category. It's been lumped in as the baylands because it's planned as part of this larger project. But that strip of Industrial Way properties has its own land use category and its own zoning. So you could just roll that over if you didn't want to propose any changes. In terms of those buildings, you know, they are what they are in terms of what is their useful economic life. In terms of a 50 or 40-year build-out, I would suspect many of these buildings are really to the very end of their useful economic life. So I think you're not looking at how those buildings will be retained in perpetuity, because they're not. So you're looking at that next, if somebody's going to get rebuilt there, what form does it take? And if you want to keep the same general regulations in place, that's your prerogative.
Okay, that brings up a totally different question. My understanding is the zoning is, from what I've heard, there's a difference in the zoning that's in the EIR and in the general plan. And some of the zoning is pre.
This is M1, right?
And at some point, we were supposed to be looking at the zoning and seeing how we wanted to zone this area. Is that correct?
There's a issue with M1 zoning citywide. This is a portion of the area that's in question. Ultimately, if this property is included within a specific plan, the zoning and all the regulations will be subsumed by the specific plan. So the idea you have to look at this area as a one-off from the larger specific plan area isn't really necessary. You can fix whatever you need to fix through this planning process for the baylands and separate it from the other M1 zones, which are in other areas of town.
I, I saw a meeting with the city council, and they recommended that we, that we separate it out from VWR and, and look at this individually.
Well, you are doing that in a way, because you're looking at it as part of the bayland specific plan, right? That's what, you're considering this industrial area as part of the larger baylands project. So you have the opportunity to look at the zoning or the general plan aspect as part of this exercise. So the idea.
I understand. But, I mean, VWR, there were some changes in zoning to VWR to make it, I don't even remember. And then that was also going to apply to this area and then one other area.
All the currently zoned M1 properties, yes.
Right.
I think the suggestion from the city council was to zone this area as trade commercial.
I don't think the council gave any particular direction for this particular area. The understanding is that it is being planned and will be considered as part of this planning process. So the idea of separating it out and lumping it with the other geographically separate M1 zones, it could be done, but it's in front of you now, so I don't see what the value is of extracting it from this conversation and deciding to discuss it separately.
Well, I'll explain why I think there's a value of extracting it and discussing it separately. There's a lot of development going on here right now. And we've also seen development in the area, like the Twin Towers, it became the One Tower, or on a smaller scaled, the commercial space at One San Bruno that's been empty for many years. So if we have a reason that we need to tear down all of those buildings to remediate, then there's no point in discussing it. But if that's not a necessity, it's already possible that the existing buildings there could remodel or could come through the normal planning commission process to revitalize that area, if there is a buyer who wants to do that. So.
Now, which area are you speaking of?
I'm talking about Industrial Way.
Uh-huh.
My, my inclination would be to leave Industrial Way alone unless some issue comes up that demands that we change it. And unambiguously make it TC, trade commercial, and allow the businesses to naturally improve themselves as there's money there, as, as opposed to taking the risk of taking them all out and then finding that we don't have tenants or, or that, you know, we lose businesses because the new area is a lot more expensive and, and no one can afford to pay for the, the development that was done there. And we already have a lot of new development going into the north in the plan, you know, under one form or another. So my inclination would be to try to leave this area as is, if that's feasible.
I've always wanted to leave it as is. Yeah. I, I think it's just, if we could somehow be able to, to keep Industrial Way, it's providing something that other areas have pushed out in other areas in San Francisco and other areas. And, and there's things there that, like, I think there's a small brewing company right now. There's a pop company, you know, there's something very attractive about Industrial Way. So I don't know how we would write that up.
I think I agree with Commissioner Anderson that we can leave it the way it is and go through the regular, you know, planning process when anybody wants to change it. Keep it under M1 regulations.
At, at a, at a general plan level, what I'd suggest, just in the way we're doing this, is we would call that light industrial, essentially maintaining the existing uses and, and, but not necessarily the existing buildings and let the existing, so it'd be a light industrial use, we can work out the zoning to implement the, the general plan.
Yeah, I, I agree. And I think M1 is not the term that's used in the general plan. I think we'd want to use the terminology.
Terminology in the general plan?
Trade commercial. That should be checked.
Because.
I, I would suggest rather than trade commercial, if you're looking at the existing uses, which are really industrial in nature, the trade commercial is the one that we've had all the discussion of about prohibiting industrial. It has industrial uses in it, but trade commercial has warehousing, distribution, commercial.
I think it's broader, right?
If your intent is really light industrial for the existing uses, we can just call it that.
Okay.
Then it's a lot clearer than, than the broader trade commercial.
Yeah. Just anyway, fixing the ambiguity, I think, is the important part and, and making it compatible with what's there right now.
Thanks, Joe.
So we're in agreement?
Agreed.
Light, light industrial?
Agreed.
Okay.
I think you're right on the point.
Now we get to the interesting ones. They've all been interesting. It'll get a little bit more fun. Area Five is, is the western portion of the site between Geneva and the, the channel open space area. In the DSP scenarios, this is one of the areas where there are residential uses proposed, along with retail and office. So there, you could categorize that as mixed use rather than trying to lay out the detailed land use as, as in the, the DSP scenario. The CPP scenarios have a combination of hotels, civic uses, open space on, open space on the southerly portion. Renewable energy alternative has R and D along the Geneva frontage with open space to the south. So this also, as you get to the northerly portion of, of Area Five, is within that half-mile transit area. So this is one of the areas, as are the, the areas north of Geneva and the Geneva frontage, the, the primary or, or prime transit-oriented areas. So in terms of, of how you look at uses, remember, one of your basic principles was transit orientation to uses. So I'm just pointing that out as we start looking at Area Five.
In the recent financial analysis, there was a proposal for a large corporate park, hypothetically. And I was wondering how many acres they had penciled in for that.
Camp, like a campus?
Right, the headquarters, campus. Do you know how many head, how many acres they had penciled in for that?
They were talking about 300 acres.
300 acres.
300.
So nine and eight, or 17, 170 acres for the.
Yeah, Area Five, just, and, and I don't think Kaiser Marston looked at a corporate park or campus as a specific acreage, as, as so much a type of use. Area Five is certainly large enough for one. So if you were looking at specifically corporate campus or campuses, a couple, or a office campus that might have multiple tenants, that campus would be a commercial office-type designation, as proposed in, in the DSP. That would also include a, a mix of residential uses within that transit area, which would make it more of a, of a mixed use. But Areas Five and Six are really the, the primary, along with One and the northern portion of Two, the primary transit-oriented areas of your site, of the site.
If housing is not approved in that, this area, is that going to imply a realignment of the transit center? Or would that likely stay at Geneva and Tunnel?
The, the, let's see, the transit center. The idea of, of at Geneva and, and Tunnel.
Would there be a transit center if there wasn't?
I mean, there certainly could be. And that's, that's one of the things to talk about. The, the idea of the Bay Shore Caltrain Station, one of the proposals that had been looked at was moving that south so it lines with Geneva. And you, you then end up with the BRT connecting directly to, to Caltrain, which makes a lot of sense. San Francisco was looking at it differently, you know, you want to push it all up into San Francisco and that aside. So I think you could look at Areas Five and Six to say, we want the higher-intensity transit-oriented uses in, in whatever mix. The idea would be to put the, move the Caltrain station south so that it align with a BRT route, so that there'd be a, a transit center and a BRT stop at Tunnel and Geneva, connecting directly to Caltrain.
How far San Francisco is with their push for moving towards San Francisco, the transit center?
They were doing some preliminary studies, feasibility work. That's been an ongoing effort, and I haven't seen any indication that it's advancing to the point of being up, having a working draft. It's, it's been over a year since they've been kind of floating this idea. So I don't have any expectation that we're going to see anything very soon.
The JPB is the controlling agency, right?
Correct.
And then the way they take the decision on these things, it took them about 20, almost 18 years to decide about the extension into the San Francisco. So I don't see in foreseeable future, we see the transit center here, because there's a conflict of interest between two, three cities here. Daly City wants towards Daly City, San Francisco wants towards San Francisco. So that whole area, designating as a transit-oriented, at this point is premature, in my, my opinion. Because the thing is, we don't know where it's going to go, how, and where the money is going to come from, and where it's going to be located.
I don't think you want to discount the fact that the Bay Shore Station is already there.
It's already there, but the thing is.
The idea if you want to, I mean, I wouldn't recommend that you ignore its existence. It's.
No, I want, I didn't say, I, maybe I misspoke about the, this existence. What I'm saying is they'll be putting too much emphasis on multi-user station here. And I don't think it's near term, it's feasible, at this point. So in our equation, we should look at it. There, yes, there is a station there, but how useful that will be. And same thing with the Geneva Extension, too. They all are in distant future from, from now. So if you want to plan the, the area now, we have to look at it now, or we're going to look at in 20 years from now, when these things will become a reality. And, and the confusion I have is we keep saying that we should be looking at now, but we don't have the funds, nor we have the plans, nor all the agencies are in agreement with that. So in the absence of that, we have to look at what is we can do now for these areas. And the, one of the proposals made was residential. And as you know, that the feeling here in the city, survey shows very little interest in the residential area. So. So, pardon me? So the thing is, what we are here at this point, we cannot really make, determine whether we should consider that as a residential element or not. That's difficulty I have. I mean, I'm not saying the residential is not a feasible option here, but I have to look at what the realities are here. And in the absence, in the presence of the reality, I say the Geneva extension is not in sight, the transit center is not in sight for next fifteen, twenty years. As far as the Caltrain capacity to handle all this, increased flow is not there. There is no money to fix the Bart stations and Bart fleet. So what we have to look at is what really is there now, and in the near future. And based on that, we should decide what should go here, rather than keep looking that is a prime thing for the transit-oriented community. It's not at this point. Maybe in twenty years from now. So that's my take on this. So if you look at it now, I will say that we should look what exists now, not putting our eggs in twenty years from now.
So what are you thinking?
What I'm thinking is, the residential element is really, is questionable in my mind, as to what we should put the residential here or not. Because residential, it makes sense to be near the transit and all that, but it's not there. And also, these city citizens have already expressed their opinion. The survey clearly indicates that very little interest in the residential. So if tonight, we're looking at it, how much emphasis we're going to put on that, residential element of that. And I think we all have to discuss on that. I express my views regarding the infrastructures needed for the residential support, and it's not there. So...
So we're talking about Five and Six?
It affects what...
I think we should talk, maybe we should go to Six and then just...
Five and Six are pretty much similar.
They're fairly similar.
And another thing that in my mind is, we keep saying the Geneva extension is like a miracle, it's going to help the traffic flow. It's not. All it's going to do is just take some of the traffic from Bay Shore. The main concern we have is 101. And there is no way we can increase the capacity of 101. There is no way to enlarge it, and there's no way to make another freeway. So all Geneva extension is going to do is take some of the street traffic on the Geneva. But it might bring a lot more traffic from Daly City, so it may create even worse situation, because it's like a river. And if you're putting a new inlet into that, that doesn't solve anything. All it's doing is bringing the same number of cars to the, now the increased number of cars. So we keep saying the Geneva extension is a plus, plus, plus. To me, it's not. All it's doing is just improving the street traffic a little bit, but doesn't solve the traffic problem or congestion. And I entertain anybody that disagrees with me as to why, am I wrong with that? Because the thing is, the river has certain amount of capacity to take the flow.
Well, I do have to admit that whenever I've talked to anyone, or attended any meetings about improving Caltrains, improving Bar, it's just, you're right. There's, I don't see that as...
What's happening with the Bart system right now? Their fleet is all aging, and there is no money to fix that. And here, we're talking about multi-billion dollar investment here. And who knows what kind of Congress we will have, and how they're going to give the money to us. Because all that money goes through the, you know, through the Congress, through FRA and FHWA. All those agencies are involved. And depending on whether it's Democratic or Republican, you know, the majority, that will depend. Some Republicans seem to be favoring certain things. Democratic Senate, they favor other things. If you're a Democratic majority, you probably have more dollars available for transit and all that, because they like that kind of stuff. But the Republican administration don't seem to be. So there are a lot of uncertainties here, a lot of uncertainties. And as a result, I have very difficult time between Five and Six as to what, whether to allow residential or not. I'm not, I mean, I understand there is a need for residential here. I understand that. And we do need to have more housing. We do need to have people to stay. But the thing is, it's a regional issue. And in my opinion, if you want to look at that, we should be looking at it as a state as a whole. And what's happening is that each city is doing their own job. San Francisco didn't even consult Daly City or any of the other cities that we should put housing in the sludge or anything. They just went there and did it. And the other cities are doing that, too. So what we're doing is a fiasco here. Why can't we have a state-level dialogue on that and say, okay, this is the crisis we have? Can we develop fairfield area? Can we develop the areas away from that and have the, you know, satellite stations and facilities for those businesses that are in Silicon Valley? Why everybody has to be here? So we should have some kind of tax incentive for people to move to Stockton or other places. We're not doing that. We're just saying that, oh, we're going to have the problem solved. If you build more housing, we're going to have problems solved if you have more transit. But all that, there is no money there. So, that's my biggest concern here with, and I feel sorry for not having residences in the area. I really feel sorry. Is there any way we can solve the problem? But we can't. Because the infrastructure is not there. In European countries, and New York, and Boston, and all those areas, we already have the rail system fully developed, you know? And we have the development residential in those areas. It makes a lot of sense. But we don't have that here. In California, we are car-dependent society.
So, aside from the mixed-use issue that includes the residential, can we come to an agreement as to any of the others that are listed here? Hotels, dash civic, slash open space?
I don't have any problem with R and D facilities.
Okay, so...
That will be really good.
So we can say R and D?
Open space or R and D.
Open space. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think we're all listening to each other, but please chime in. So, hotel?
One.
Yeah.
Hotel, okay.
Majority, but yeah, I could see.
Could you clarify what civic is? I just want to make sure I understand it correctly.
In the CPP scenarios, there were public uses. It was called civic space, civic overlay, a number of different, essentially, public buildings. So, I think as part of your general plan, you don't need to plan for public buildings. And in some ways, it's better. Public buildings are under any of these categories included, so you don't have to really, really deal with that.
To move the city all over there, is that the idea?
No, it would be...
Or Public Works Department or something like that, I guess.
We could also have...
Yeah, I mean, the roundhouse and public uses in and around the roundhouse. I think, you know, the other thing to consider here is, Area Five is the area with the roundhouse. What are the uses surrounding? And how do you really play up the use of the roundhouse? And if you're looking at educational uses and making that a major feature...
Right.
Having the more industrial uses around probably makes it less part of the community and less active than it would with other kinds of uses. So that's another consideration to think here. I think also in terms of the question of timing of the Geneva extension and others, one of the things that we'll do in a subsequent meeting, you've all talked about, one of your basic principles was tying the timing of development to the provision of amenities and infrastructure and so on. So that phasing question of how various uses relate to Geneva extension, improvements in transit, and all those things that were part of the traffic study as assumptions, will be part of the discussion we have in terms of phasing and how do we relate land development to the other, or to those improvements and amenities.
Well, at this point, I'm agreeable with R and D and open space.
So basically, everything except the mixed-use, mixed-use meaning that it could possibly include retail, office, hotel, and conference facilities, and residential, as well as commercial recreation?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
So should we, how do you want to deal with the mixed-use question? Is that a decision we will make today, or do we want to hold off and discuss it further?
I will say, let's hold off in the next meeting when it comes up with more data on Geneva and all that stuff.
Right.
And see if it can...
Is that okay with...
Say it more lightly.
I'm okay with holding it off, holding off on the final decision, but I'll state my opinion right now.
Please.
There's been a lot of talk about sustainable growth. And, you know, I don't want to be a wet blanket, but that term is, at its root, an oxymoron. You cannot grow forever. Eventually, you will be full. And we are now at the point where we are full, and we're at a point of desperation with our fullness, because people want to build anywhere where they see, you know, something not already built. I don't think that this is a good site for residential. We had a lot of people who've spent years studying the site on BB CAG, and none of them said that there were remediation plans that would make the site acceptable for residential. On the flip side, we had experts who said that the site could be remediated, but they have no, they've never had a site that they couldn't remediate. And that does, actually does not fill me with confidence. In terms of the survey, we were actually fairly split. We had a very large number of people who were strongly opposed. We had a very large number of people who were strongly in favor, and then there were some people in the middle. Now, the issue about the people who are strongly in favor is, you know, again, they're desperate for affordable housing. But four thousand units, as large as that is for Brisbane, it's not a significant number of units. The developer might make some units that are low-income, but low-income today is designed, or it's defined by square footage, or worse, units per area. And in this market, you can have very small units that command a very high price. So, this area, if we did put housing in it, would not meet any of the demands of the typical person who's asking for housing. So I don't feel like there's any good reason, or it's justifiable, for us to recommend housing to the city council at this time.
Anyone else have any opinion about that, or can hold on?
I have not been able, well, I've already made, I've already stated that I do not want to put housing in this area. I think that, first of all, I don't think if it went to a vote, it would pass. I think that I'm not comfortable with putting housing on this land. Just not. I've gone to BBCIG meetings for, I don't know how many years, and I think that there's a lot of things that can go wrong. And, you know, and if we put another type of building, people can leave. You know, if there's a, you know, office building that's put there, and for some reason, you know, it's not very good quality land, and there's problems, then there's other office buildings. If you put housing there, then it will remain housing. And I'd rather see housing go on land that I feel comfortable that the people, you know, will, if there's something wrong with the land, then people will lose their homes, or they're going to be stuck living there. And if it's, you know, if it's affordable housing, and there's rules, then it's going to be even more difficult for people to move. So I, you know, I am opposed to housing in this particular location. I think there's other areas that we can look at for Brisbane to put housing, but not this area. You know, I think there's very reasonable areas to put housing.
Anyone else? No? Yeah. I think health issues are my major concern there, too. So, but again, I will table that for when we have the full-on discussion. So I think, right now, we can say R and D, open space, hotel, civic.
That's pretty good.
And mixed use for...
For both, Five and Six.
And we're talking, yes, both Area Five and Six, right?
Yeah, except not mixed.
Yeah, not mixed use, right?
Yeah.
Five and Six, yes.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah? Okay. So I think that's it?
Somebody had used the term "throw a wet blanket" before, which...
No, no, Commissioner Anderson said that he didn't want to be a wet blanket.
Yeah, and, okay, so Area, you know, the idea, as I was listening, Area Five, look at R and D, open space. I think at various points in your discussion, you had also talked about keeping mixed use or some form of commercial office, campus-type use on the table, Area Five, Area Six. So what I would remind the commission of is, in the discussion last time of the economics, in order to deal with infrastructure issues, remediation issues, one of the things that Tim Kelly had said is, look in terms of millions, plural square feet of building area, because that's what it's going to take to generate enough value in the land to make the infrastructure work. R and D, the combination of R and D and open space in Area Five, R and D in Area Six, is not going to get to that formula. That's going to be very low, and based on what you heard last time, not likely to
Right.
provide that amount of land value.
So, what you're saying is that, and I actually agree, that probably Six should be more a campus area?
How about those Facebook and others in Redwood City area? How they managing to build all those bigger campuses and have the, you know, fiscal analysis in place to support that? Do you know that?
Yeah.
We have any data on that? Because there are a lot of campuses being built, and even in South San Francisco. And there must be some, somewhere they're making the money. Otherwise, why would they build it?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. What you see in the Bay Area are the large campuses, whether they be single-user, multi-user, are the popular development type, particularly in the tech industry. They are fairly intensive uses, even though they are campus-like. And that is a really popular land use, and a very vibrant land use in the market area. In other areas, they are not facing the infrastructure issues that are faced in the Baylands. And so, I think, you know, just a couple of issues as you think about that. One is, the needing to create enough value in the buildings to support the infrastructure, which were multiple millions of square feet. The R and D as, you know, single or two-story camp, you know, physical buildings are not going to get you there. The other one is, the R and D as an industrial-type use is much lower in employment generation than a larger office campus would be. And when you talked about, particularly Area Six, and even on the Geneva frontage, looking more at transit orientation, that transit orientation in means higher intensity in terms of employment generation, as opposed to the lower-intensity uses. So, whether you wanted to look at a higher-intensity commercial office, so you can generate that amount of value in the land in Area Five, look at a higher-intensity use with setbacks... setbacks around the roundhouse, but generate something that has more people to create more activity at the roundhouse. And so it becomes, if you had, if you, if you picture R and D low industry with not a lot of workers there, as opposed to a larger campus setback, where you generate more activity, people would use the, the, the roundhouse green and all of those kinds of areas. In terms of, of the residential use, you, you've kind of laid out both of the issues and, you know, some of the issues in terms of comfort with remediation. And, and I think, and I think it was Commissioner Munir had, had said, you know, how do we tie that to all these transit improvements? And that's really the phasing issue that, that we will have. So one of the things that we could do is look at, when we come back, looking at development intensity, a couple different options on areas five and six. To look at area five as the R and D open space area such as is laid out in the renewable energy scenario, which is what you've been talking about. Look at it as more a campus-like area with higher intensity office uses and, and even a mixed use. So you'll get an idea of what the flavor and character of those are and we can discuss that in terms of, of intensity. And then if you stay with that, you know, the concerns that you have regarding, it just doesn't seem, feel safe, we can rule out the mixed use, look at a commercial office or if that intensity doesn't work for you, then kind of lower the intensity to more of an R and D low-rise use. But we can lay out the options for you and then bring them all back in terms of building character. And then when we also get past that density issue or deal with that density issue, the next one is the policy issues that will be in the following meeting when we can talk about phasing and how do we tie rates of development to the provision of some of these major improvements that have been talked about and assumed as part of the traffic study.
And I think you, you always have to keep in mind the, the impact on the traffic. So even if you're R and D or mixed use or all that, the idea is not to have too many people over there where we don't have the means to get, get them out of there.
Absolutely.
And, and you have to look at the existing condition, not Geneva extension is in place, not the, you know, the, the Caltrain services in full bore.
Okay.
Because that's not going to happen for a long time.
Yeah, and here's your, your general plan level dilemma is the existing general plan does look at the Geneva extension and, and part of, of just the planning dilemma is looking at typically is looking out 20 years, what do we want our community to be 20 years from now? What is our vision? What would we like to see? And then as Commissioner Munir said, how do we get from today to our vision of the future? Because if all we, if we get stuck with, we don't have the Geneva extension today, we don't have a lot of these things, you can lose a lot of opportunities in your long-term opportunities. So part of what we have to do in planning is look at what is our vision and then deal with how do we get from the constraints we have today to what we want to see in the future? And that is really part, will be part of the phasing discussion that we have to have.
Then you can, you can have a 10-year or 15-year projection or something, then that way you can have an entirely different type of plan that from now until 10 years, this is what the zoning should be, look like unless it should be after 15 years, once they, these things are incoming in place, we may allow this different zoning at that time. But right now, we cannot say that we're going to have this.
Yeah, an example of that was what, it's about 10 years ago now, what the city of Antioch did when they updated their general plan. One of the issues was will BART be extended out to Antioch? And BART was pushing very hard for there ought to be high-density mixed-use transit-oriented, oriented development at the Four Freeway and Hillcrest. And the city said, we are not going to commit to that density of land use and then find ourselves with no transit and throw everything onto the freeway. And so what that general plan did was say something along the lines of our long-term vision is high-density mixed-use development in that location, but the actual ability to do that is based on BART making the commitment to get out there. So you can, not necessarily lay out a number of years, but lay out milestones that would say, this is what you can do at this point with, with the existing roadway system. As commitments are made to these extensions, you get this much more. And that's, that's that phasing discussion and part of the, how do we get from today to the, the future?
I think, I think you probably heard that BART is, is saying that we made a big mistake by committing the mixed use because we, we cannot support all those people. We don't have the money to bring new cars.
Exactly.
And here we are saying that we should have those more people over there, with the transit agency itself saying that we, we are not capable of handling this.
And that will be the, the phasing discussion of tying it to milestones or you could do that.
Yeah. And in this particular case, also the other aspect is the, is the toxic stuff and, you know, all of that comes into play also. So it's a very complicated scenario here to decide whether we should allow housing or not. So, so I hope that we all understand that part and that's why we, we are difficulty in getting, coming up with a decision on that. But at this point, I'm, again, reinforce that I'm not in favor of housing. R and D will be okay.
Yep. Okay. So we can move forward. So at this point, I think we can open it up for our public comments. Again, I'd like to remind everyone, this is the deliberation space, uh, stage, which means that public hearings have been completed. So out of value for the public feedback, we are opening it up to public comments, but we are asking that you limit it to three minutes and only refer to the issues that we discussed today. And please to bring any value-added comments and feedback, please don't repeat and debate the issues. So if you could, please keep that in mind, that'd be great. And I'm just going to call it in the order that it was handed to me. So. Mr. Seeloff?
Good evening. Commissioners, my name is Sarah Seeloff and I serve as the Executive Director of the Center for Creative Land Recycling, a national nonprofit based in Oakland that has pioneered brownfields and infill development for over 20 years, supporting the cleanup and repurposing of thousands of acres of land for housing, commercial and open space, both within the Bay Area and nationally. The Center for Creative Land Recycling is the oldest and only national nonprofit solely dedicated to community revitalization by providing technical assistance in support of brownfield redevelopment projects to municipalities like Brisbane. The center has the technical expertise and experience to help the planning commission and wider Brisbane community understand the environmental and health implications of remediation of the Baylands and to assess UPC's plans to address these concerns. And that's what I'm here to address tonight. One of the three basic principles for redevelopment of the Baylands, as established by this commission, is ensuring the safety of future uses in relation to site remediation and landfill closure. The safer mediation and reuse of brownfields is a well-established best practice in sustainable land use, yielding multiple benefits to local communities. These include residential and commercial development and open space, jobs, improved transportation, and most importantly, the removal of contamination and threats to environmental and human health. I'd like to hearken to some discussion that we heard earlier this evening regarding the remediation process. Remediation requirements are well-established and science-based. The remediation process mandates close coordination between the developer and state regulators, such as the State Water Board or Department of Toxic Substances Control, ensuring that the cleanup results in a site safe for its intended reuse, including sensitive uses such as housing. And that the remediation process itself protects everyone from construction and office workers to final residents. It's important to note that as part of the remediation planning process, state regulators typically require the establishment of contingency plans so that should additional contamination be discovered during the cleanup, UPC can act quickly and effectively to remove whatever risk that new discovery may pose. I'd like to stress that safe, effective, environmental remediation happens every day to turn post-industrial land into community assets around the country that safeguard human and environmental health by cleaning up contamination. Turning specifically to uses, the Center for Creative Land Recycling has assisted scores of safe and successful residential developments on formerly contaminated land in the Bay Area and around the country. Housing is a frequent, safe and highly sustainable outcome for redeveloped brownfields. A good example, very similar to the Baylands, is Township Nine, a 65-acre, master-planned, mixed-use, transit-oriented development in the River District of Sacramento. With our assistance, the developer won over $30 million in state grants to address contamination issues from the site's industrial past and to build up the infrastructure necessary for what will eventually include 2,300 units of, of housing of various types, 840,000 square feet of office space and 140,000 square feet of urban retail, all located along a new extension of regional transit's light rail line, the first 180-unit building opened last year. I also want to point out that the safer use of landfills is a common practice. As just one example, the Center for Creative Land Recycling assisted a coalition of community groups in Portland, Oregon, in transforming a closed 25-acre construction landfill into a community park and market. We provided input on redevelopment plans and provided help regarding state and local funding sources and technical resources. We've seen landfills turned into parks, stadiums, shopping centers and solar fields. I encourage you to visit our website, cclr.org, to see more examples and I'm happy to provide additional information. Reusing land is one of the most sustainable things a community can do and I congratulate you for your thoughtful consideration of the remediation and reuse of Brisbane Baylands. Thanks very much and I hope that the Center for Creative Land Recycling can be a resource to your efforts.
Thank you.
Question? We have heard of a number of similar remediation efforts for sites that are like five or seven years old, but do you have studies of sites that were remediated like 20 years old for, you know, 10 or 20 years that might have more of a history to them?
By history, Commissioner, would you be referring to, I mean, the fact that there's a track record since these sites would have been redeveloped? The, we can certainly find you some examples, if that's of interest. The federal brownfields program is about 20 years old. So some of the earlier cases could very well be available and I'd happy to be in touch, be happy to be in touch about that.
That would be great.
Anything else? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Jonathan Scharfman.
Good evening, Commissioners, Jonathan Scharfman with UPC. I would just like to focus a little bit on your recommendations regarding area two. My understanding and the recommendations were along the lines of two primary uses, one for renewable energy in area two as, and the other for the ecology expansion. And I don't have, I don't have an exact quote of, of what was stated up here, but with a, a thin strip of development perhaps on either side of Geneva Avenue. A couple of points, a couple of points on why we strongly believe that's inadvisable. Number one, on the ecology side, one of the reasons that we, we have expressed concerns about the ecology expansion is because the, the ecology expansion as, as put forth in the CPPV actually restricts the access to the Bay Shore Caltrain Station from the east side of the tracks. And so we, we believe that, we believe that any future uses out on the Baylands should have full access from east, west, north and south to the Bay Shore Caltrain Station, whether it stays where it is or whether it moves. Number one. Number two, there, while there's, whether, while there's some discussion amongst Commissioners about the, the potential usefulness of Geneva Avenue, it is, I, I just ask you to seriously consider how, how a renewable energy development could actually support a 50 to $100 million improvement like the Geneva Avenue extension, which is, which is what it would cost to have that come in. There's a, there's a very, there's a nexus between the cost of these improvements and the level of development around it is, is needed to support it. So I would ask that any renewable energy alternative take that into account.
Could you go back and say that again?
The Geneva Avenue extension, Geneva Avenue extension has, has, and, and the interchange
Right.
will, has, has been estimated in the preliminary construction costs that, that Randy Brose's team put together exceeded $100 million.
Right.
And that is to be funded by a combination of sources, including some sources from the development of that property. So I would just, I would just ask the commission to much more seriously consider whether renewable energy development can help fund those improvements around Geneva Avenue or in fact, whether ecology is willing to fund those improvements adjacent to Geneva Avenue, which, which I hear as a recommendation you are making. And I'll also just a piece of, a, a, a piece of related news, Sun Edison, the largest renewable energy developer globally, filed for Chapter 11 bankruptcy this, this past, this past week. The economics of, of solar energy are, are something that we don't believe that the commission is taking very seriously. And we ask you to please do so before you make these recommendations on, for, for these types of uses. I'll also remind you that with leadership of Crebel, we, we actually in 2008 went to PG&E and had a meeting with the head of procurement, renewable energy procurement in 2008, after PG&E was mandated to procure up to 500 megawatts of renewable energy in order to meet new state's renewable portfolio standard by 2020. And this site, we were told by the person who makes those decisions for PG&E, that this site was not under consideration because it did not meet their criteria. Because A, there were environmental conditions that needed to be addressed. B, they were not able to procure the sheer number of electrons that they needed in order to meet their broader goals. This is the head of procurement and I went there with the leaders of Crebel and that's what, that's what they were told. So please, take more seriously the facts on the ground about, about some of these items before you, you put zoning around this area that is going to limit development to uses that may not be able to support those, those extensions of infrastructure. And finally, there, there were some, there were some questions about the lack of funding for transportation infrastructure. I'm here to remind you that the Bay Shore Caltrain Station as it exists is, is the second lowest ridership station along the Caltrain Line, along a line that has increased in ridership by double digits for the past number of years, as, as you have heard. And also a system that already has funding in place for an electrification program that's going to allow them to meet the requirements of the future. And this funding, I, I, I challenge Commissioner Munir's reasoning for, for stopping development until there's money in place for transportation infrastructure because in fact, for improving transportation infrastructure that's already in place, there, there, there is funding for the Caltrain Modernization Program. And, and in order to get more funding to assist in getting transportation improvements, to get people out of their cars and onto transit, the regional agencies in the state really want to see cities like Brisbane make decisions to put high-density, mixed-use development within a half-mile of those station areas that are already in place. Please reconsider putting solar farms and, and industrial uses from the last century around these, these precious resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jodiass?
Good evening, Honorable Planning Commissioners, Joel Diaz. Thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. So, you know, I apologize, some of my comments are kind of maybe, maybe not so coherent all the time. And I'm kind of thinking on the fly as I'm sitting here, listening to everything and trying to evaluate everything, and there's really a lot of material to consider. And so, I'm kind of always in a rush to like jot these notes down and try to formulate my thoughts and save time, because it's all got to be within a few minutes. And so it's kind of difficult. But, um, so I have a lot to say, and, you know, the, kind of what I've been doing is personally, is sort of trying to debunk a lot of myths. And for me, when I first heard about the baylands, I believed a lot of different stories. I, I believed a lot of different things that made sense to me. There were plausible stories, there were good stories. And the more I got into this, the more I realized these things don't really make a lot of sense. And as I dug deeper into some of these things, I found out that in fact, it was, it was totally the opposite. And maybe it was just my fault for believing these things. Of great help is, is reading the EIR. And there's a lot of information in that EIR that doesn't come out here at these meetings, very pertinent information. The, you know, one of the objectives tonight in the staff report is to ensure safety in relationship to remediation and landfill closure, Title 27. And in the EIR, and under comments, under, under 2.413, it very clearly states, um, that the key determination made in the draft EIR regarding the relationship between the city's planning review and the regulatory agency's remediation review process is that while sufficient information is available for the city to make a general plan, concept plan, land use decision, there is not sufficient information to support adoption of a specific plan at this time. Says very clearly that there's not enough information to adopt a specific plan. Yet somehow, I, as I understand it, we're being asked to potentially consider adopting a specific plan. There is not enough information to do, related to, this is, and the, and the title of this section is Relationship Between Proposed Project Site Development and Title 27 Landfill Closure Site Remediation, which is exactly that, one of the points that we're talking about tonight. And then, you know, so, so at the very most, it sounds like what we, the only thing we can do is approve a concept plan. Certainly can't do a specific plan. Later on, on that same page, it talks about, there is much more subsequent sequel analysis needed, um, starting with human health risk assessments. See if it's even safe for people, for people. That hasn't been done yet. And you have to do all of that analysis before you can adopt a specific plan. So that is something I didn't understand until just recently. The, the idea that, that we can't hear from the DTSC, the Department of Toxic Substance Control, or the Regional Water Quality Control Board, or the Samhain Tail Health System, I think that's what the terminology, or the name, is, it doesn't make sense to me. Why aren't we hearing from those people? Those are the chief regulatory agencies in charge of remediation, in charge of landfill closure. And yet, those agencies are conspicuously absent from all of this analysis. We have a bunch of studies that were prepared by third parties, ostensibly hired by the developer and the city, but we don't actually have any, any recommendation or opinion from these, the chief regulatory agencies. And I can pretty much guarantee you that if they had something good to say about this, we would be hearing all about it. It would be very supportive of these, these plans for development. But conspicuously, that is, that is absent. We have no comments from those agencies that I can see in the EIR. And, and they are in charge. And according to the toxicologist that was here, that, that spoke, um, I think her name was Susan, these regulatory agencies are in control right now in managing the remediation and the landfill closure in compliance with Title 27 right now. And what she said at the last meeting, I went back and watched the video over again a few times. She said that the owner, regardless of development, the owners will clean up the site. They will close the landfill. They have to. It is unavoidable. It is unavoidable for the, for the owners. And she, she really stressed that they have stringent goals, these agencies, the Regional Water Control Board, the DTSC. Some of those stringent goals are land use restrictions. And she talked about how, when this is all, this process is completed, when the landfill is actually, the, the closure plan is actually, actually completed, that these agencies will actually impose deed restrictions and covenants and, uh, potentially use restrictions based on what they feel is safe, a safe use of that site. So the notion that we as a city can go ahead and zone this area without hearing from those folks, those agencies, is, is kind of silly. You know, I mean, for example, if, what if they told us, hey, that site is totally lethal, and we, as a city, wouldn't say, well, that's okay, we're going to zone it residential anyway, right? We wouldn't do that. That's why it's imperative for us to have some of that information from them, to give us a starting point, right? We, we wouldn't want to approve residential if we, if we knew in advance that the DTSC and the Regional Water Quality Control Board would not support that. So it's really important to at least have their opinion, get their, their, their opinion of these, this analysis, where this thing is headed, what might be appropriate, because they will record deed restrictions and they will, we can zone it any way we want, but they will not let us build it unless we comply with, with their demands, that these agencies. So it's very important to have that, that, that piece of the puzzle. You know, with regard to the infrastructure improvements and how you're going to pay for the Geneva overpass, you know, that was another myth that I, I really believe is, wow, how are we going to pay for all this infrastructure? But also, neatly in the EIR, it, it clearly explains that it is the intensity of development that will require and necessitate this infrastructure, specifically the Geneva overpass. So if you had a solar renewable energy farm on the east side, you potentially would not be required to put in the Geneva overpass. The requirement for the Geneva overpass and all this major, super-expensive infrastructure is based on the intensity of development. Also a myth, one that I used to believe, and has been debunked in writing in the EIR. So how do you pay for it? You don't have to pay for it. We don't have to build it. You just put in the renewable energy farm. Let's see here. The, um, just going to go through my notes quickly, I'm sorry. So there's a lot of ambiguity for me personally. There's a lot of confusion for myself personally. And I, I really would appreciate the clarity here, because as I understand it, this site is already being remediated. It will be cleaned up regardless of development. There are no fiscal benefits that I can see that warrant this type of commitment from the city. The fiscal analysis clearly shows that there's a $2.1 million loss, net loss to the city to have residential. We don't have the necessary human health risk assessments to even know if it's safe for, for humans to be living there. The, the, um, report by Mr. Lee, I believe, also states that development will actually increase the release of hazardous materials. So it's actually less remediation. So, so again, the notion that, you know, this is a great idea to reuse brownfields and we can make it safe, we aren't making it safer. We're making it more hazardous. Currently, it's the safest situation we could have with the current plan in place. So another myth, I always believe that somehow development is going to clean up the site, and it appears it is not going to. There's that. And, you know, I, I do feel, um, sorry for UPC and all the time and energy they put into this, but you know, sorry, it's, it doesn't really align with our goals, the way I see it, financially, health-wise. And these things are important, and they should really try to align their goals with our goals. This, right now, the way this is presented, it's totally one-sided, and it doesn't make sense. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So I think we're done with the public comments section. Items initiated by the staff?
Just one thing that the council did last week, approve, it was a number of years ago, the commission heard the revisions of the parking ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
And after quite an extended period of review, that was finally, ordinance was introduced by the council, so that...
That's almost five years ago.
Yeah. Mr. Toon finally did his, did his...
I don't think any of the commissioners were here.
I think that was my first, one of my first meetings.
Really?
Commissioner Anderson's new, but, uh, so that's the one item. The other thing is, you can defer it till a scheduling. You have a memo from me regarding scheduling of upcoming meeting, and that's just another thing I want to get some clarity from the commission as to when you can meet again to discuss the baylands.
So that's the memo that was in our...
Of the memorandum. I was trying to find it.
Get one?
Yeah.
And it's also, there were copies up front, but, so basically, um, we need to decide to have it, have the next meeting regarding the baylands on May 12th, where we have two members unavailable, or a special meeting on May 18th, where we only have one member unavailable.
Do we have any regular business coming before us soon?
Yes, on the 28th, you have regular, 26th, rather, you have regular business scheduled. Nothing on the 12th.
Can we swap it out?
12th was set aside for baylands, so...
Can we swap the regular business?
No. No?
We have notification requirements and processing requirements. No, we can't swap those. And neither myself nor Mr. Zola will be available on the 26th.
Oh, okay.
So May 12th or May 18th? Get my calendar.
Well, I'm not here on the 12th.
Yeah, I'm, I'm...
We're both, we're, we're both out.
And I don't know who's missing on the, I can do the 18th, but apparently...
I can do the 18th.
I can do the 18th also. Who's?
I can do the 18th.
I can do it, yes.
What?
Oh, okay.
I'll be here.
18.
Oh, so who is?
I think we're all, we're all going to be here on the 18th.
The 18th will be okay.
You'll be okay? Okay, so then that means you're May 18th.
We're all here.
Okay.
Easily decided.
[laughing]
Yay, okay. So every member...
My schedule changed, so I, I can make it.
Oh, good, okay.
Oh, all right.
Okay.
I'll be off, uh, week of June 1st through that time, to Portland.
Okay.
So...
So it's May 18th, not May 12th?
Yes, May 18th.
Yes, if you could, um, adjourn, when you do adjourn, adjourn to that special meeting.
Yeah.
It would be perfect.
Any other issue?
Okay.
I keep making things simpler for you guys.
But anything else from the commission?
Oh, yeah. We, we were still on the staff. So that's it for staff? Okay. So items come from, initiated from the commission? No?
None of this.
No?
No.
Nope. Okay, so can we have an adjournment to our next meeting, May 18th?
Make a motion to adjourn on May 18th.
Yep.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, everybody.